Welcome to the regularly scheduled city council meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselor Rodriguez.
Mr. President, thank you very much. If I could just ask everybody to please stand again and help me, in a moment of silence, to remember a great Brocktonian who passed away this week. Jorge Lobotone was a great leader of the Hispanic community, but he was a Brocktonian first, who actually always looked after children in the city of Brockton. And for this, I'd like to ask my colleagues and the public here to honor him with a moment of silence.
Thank you, Counselor. Item number one.
We have the acceptance of the minutes of the council meeting of October twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
Accepted and placed on file.
Appointment of Mary Milligan as a parking clerk for the city of Brockton.
I refer to Finance.
Reappointment of Daniel Campbell as a constable of the city of Brockton for a term of three years.
Refer to Finance.
Reappointment of Marilyn Peterschew to the position of City Auditor for the city of Brockton for a three-year term ending December two thousand and nineteen.
Counselor Ian Eary.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and act on this this evening. She is already doing the position and doing a fine job as well, so there's no reason for her to come before us at five.
Sagan. Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and act on item number four this evening. All those in favor? All those opposed? Question is on approving the appointment. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Azach.
Yes.
Bogart.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ian Eary.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Valley.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Hennany Afferman.
Reappointment is confirmed. Item number five.
We have the petition of Gary Thompson, DBA Automotive Repairs for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at two eighty-seven North Montello Street, Unit Three, Brockton, and City Clerk's Office, October fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Hearing assigned for November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at eight P.M.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please step forward to the rostrum, give the, read your name to the clerk. Mr. Thomas here?
Yeah, there he is. He doesn't.
Mr. Thomas?
Okay.
Intend a motion to postpone until the end of the meeting?
Motion postpones the end of the meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to postpone the hearing until the end of the meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? Put item number five at the end of the meeting, see if Mr. Thomas shows up. Item number six.
Petition of Wayne John, DBA M-Style Motorsports for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at two eighty-seven North Montello Street, Unit Five and Six, Brockton.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please step forward and give your name to the clerk. Is Mr. John here? If you want to step forward. If you could just give us your name for the record.
Wayne, last name is John Jowichin.
Thank you. Questions, Counselors? Is there anyone else here in favor? If so, please step forward, give your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If there is, please step forward and give your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Counselors, did you want to make a motion to send this to public safety?
Yes, Mr. President. Move to refer to public safety.
Second.
Second, motion made and seconded to refer to public safety. All those in favor? All those opposed? This will be referred to public safety. You'll get a notification of the public safety meeting, in case anyone has any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number seven.
Petition of Mag Retail Holdings, LLC, Matthew McGovern for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at three hundred Main League Street, Brockton, and Clerk's Office September thirty, two thousand and sixteen. Hearing assigned for November fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, at eight P.M.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please step forward and state your name for the clerk.
Yes, good evening, Matthew McGovern.
Good evening. Questions, Counselors? Counselor Ian Eary?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
And I know that you're here in regards to the fact that the Bernati buildings have changed name to McGovern, am I correct?
Correct.
And that's why you're here. So I would look at items number seven and also eight when we do get to it, Mr. Chairman. One is the Hyundai building, one is the Honda building, but I would think that there has really been no changes there, and ours are the same, and the operation is maintaining itself as the same way as Bernati was, correct?
That's correct, exactly the same.
Okay, so I would, I don't, do not have any problem with it, seeing the buildings are only five years old. As I say, nothing's changed, so I support what you're doing here, and I would also say the same when we do get to item eight. So I would ask my fellow colleagues, please not to send this back to public safety, because I don't think it needs to be, as they need to continue on with their business. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, could we just?
Counselor Farwell.
Could we make sure that the minutes of the meeting reflect the fact that this is really a name change only? It's not a new business, it's?
Correct, it's new ownership of changing the name of the business. Any other questions? Is there anyone else here in favor? If so, please step forward, give your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please step forward and give your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Question is now on granting the license. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Number seven. Mr. Clerk, number?
Petition of Mag Retail Holdings, H-Y-N-L-L-C, Matthew McGovern for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at three hundred Main League Street, Brockton, and Clerk's Office September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Hearing assigned for November fourteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please step forward and give your name to the clerk. Again, if you could. Counselor, same statements, I assume?
Same statement, just diddle, that's it, exactly.
Just for the public's, this is the motor vehicle repair license at the other building?
That is the other building, which is the Hyundai, excuse me, yeah, the Hyundai building, exactly. So same way, nothing's changed, and everything's the same.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, so I would approve it, yes, please.
Counselor Sullivan.
President, just a quick question. Good evening, Mr. McGovern, how are you?
Good evening.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Quick question, in terms of what the Ward Three Counselors said, it's just a name change, acquisition of Bernati. Do you operate any other within the Commonwealth or within the city of Brockton?
I do, I operate a Chrysler Jeep Dodge store in Newton, Mass. as well.
In Newton?
Yep.
Great, thank you, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor? If so, please step forward, give your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please step forward and state your name for the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Question is on granting the license. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted.
Petition of Fong Tat.
Thank you, and good luck.
Fong Tat and Derek Tat for a garage license located at seven seventy-two North Main Street, Brockton, and City Clerk's Office, October sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Hearing assigned for November fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, at eight P.M.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please step forward and state your name for the clerk.
Fong Tat.
Good evening, Mr. Tat.
Good evening.
Nine, any questions, Counselors? Counselor Stedenski.
Mr. Tat, seven seventy-two North Main, I know seven seventy-four, that's a garage. Are you sharing the same location?
The location we're sharing?
Yeah, you're sharing, are you within the same building?
No, it's different buildings. The seventy-seven-four and seventy-seven-two, it's a totally different building. It's a next door, the garage, it's different buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions? Is there anyone else here in favor? If so, please step forward and give your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please step forward and state your name for the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Counselor Farwell, did you want to make a motion on this?
Yes, move to refer to public safety.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer to public safety. All those in favor? All those opposed? This is referred to public safety. Thank you, you can stay right there, because I think you have the next one, but this will, you'll receive notification about the public safety meeting.
Petition of Fong Tat and Derek Tat Champion Auto Glass for Motor Vehicle Repair License located at seven seventy-two North Main Street, Brockton, and Clerk's Office, October sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Hearing assigned for November fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, at eight P.M.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please step forward and state your name for the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Counselor Farwell, did you want to make a motion on this?
Yes, move to refer to public safety.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer to public safety. All those in favor? All those opposed? This is referred to public safety. Thank you, you can stay right there, because I think you have the next one, but this will, you'll receive notification about the public safety meeting.
Petition of Fong Tat and Derek Tat Champion Auto Glass for Motor Vehicle Repair License located at seven seventy-two North Main Street, Brockton, and Clerk's Office, October sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Hearing assigned for November fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, at eight P.M.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please state your name for the clerk. You can state your name again for the clerk, please.
Fong Tat.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions? Is there anyone else here in favor? If so, please step forward and give your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please step forward and state your name for the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Counselor Farwell.
Move to refer to public safety.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer to public safety. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Mr. President.
Counselor Sullivan.
As Chair of the Public Safety, I just want to let those people know, it's not going to happen until after Thanksgiving, it will be in early December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll receive notification of the, when that meeting will be here, in this room.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Item number eleven.
It's okay, sorry.
All set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Report of the Public Safety Committee for its meeting of November second, two thousand and sixteen.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of November seventh, two thousand and sixteen.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor confirming the appointment of Mary Milligan as parking clerk for the city of Brockton.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with the revised auditors of the city of Brockton, Chapter Two, Section Two dash one eighty-six, appointing Megan Bridges to the position of Assistant City Solicitor, part-time for three-year term, effective November twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the city solicitor requesting an additional appropriation of twenty-five thousand dollars from unappropriate estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal two thousand and seventeen to law department ordinary maintenance services in order to fund the estimated cost of consultants to the workers' compensation agent.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the chief of police department requesting an appropriation of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from unappropriate estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal two thousand and seventeen to police personal services other than overtime as a supplemental appropriation to the police department overtime account.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the superintendent of schools requesting supplemental appropriation of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, the school department's two thousand and seventeen non-net school spending budget to meet the current needs of the system.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the chairman of the board of assessors requesting an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from unappropriate estimate receipts fiscal two thousand and seventeen of the general fund to assess the department ordinary maintenance services in order to fund the cost of commercial appraisal services for five forty West Gate Drive and two thirty-five North Pearl Street, Stewart Good Samaritan Hospital. These studies are recommended by the D.O.R.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the executive health officer requesting acceptance and expenditures of a grant award, any amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-two cents from the Mass. Department of Public Health, Region Number Five, Mass. Association of Health Boards, grant to the city of Brockton Board of Health, Mass. Association of Health Boards, grant fund to build a level of volunteers and other activities for area medical reserve corps.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the chief financial officer requesting additional funding of twenty thousand dollars that was not budgeted in the fiscal two thousand and seventeen budget to hire a financial analyst and to fill the position of budget director, and also authorization to hire the budget director at step two.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation of fund deficits to raise prior to setting the tax rate in the total amount of seventy-three thousand, thirty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents as follows. Fiscal two thousand and sixteen court judgments, sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and thirty cents. Roof repair fund, forty-three oh nine, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-six cents. Fiscal two thousand and fifteen nine eleven grant fund, thirty-three oh six, three thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-three cents. Fiscal two thousand and thirteen nine eleven grant fund, thirty-two seventy-eight, six thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Department of Public Works requesting two million dollars to fund inspection of seven miles of the parallel twenty-four inch transmission mains from Silver Lake Water Treatment Plant to Brown's Crossing Pump Station, as well as to rehabilitate the seven existing crossover locations along the same stretch. Both the inspection and construction costs are eligible for low-interest programs through the Mass. Department of Environmental Protection State Revolver Fund Program. These transmissions main projects would ensure a more efficient, more stable, and safer water system for the city's residents and surrounding communities.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO, in accordance with Section Five of Chapter Three Twenty Four of the Acts of nineteen ninety, certifying the proposed appropriation and loan order of two million dollars for purposes of performing inspections and rehabilitation of the twin transmission mains from Silver Lake Water Treatment Plant, provided that the city council adopt and the mayor approve water rate increases in addition to those already scheduled by ordinary, by ordinance, within the next six months. This is a conditional certification, which must be placed on the front of the order if it is approved. Additionally, rate increases needed are two. One of ten percent on July first, two thousand and seventeen, which is essential, and one of five percent on July one, two thousand and nineteen, which is recommended. These are in addition to the three increases already scheduled for ten percent on January one, two thousand and seventeen, ten percent on January one, two thousand and eighteen, and two point five percent on January one, two thousand and nineteen. The present water rates are inadequate to provide revenue sufficient to pay for the water systems operating and fixed costs at current service levels, while also providing for capital project financing and reimbursing the general fund for expenses it has borne on behalf of the water fund. These unpaid costs amount to nearly two million dollars.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, recommended the city council authorize the appropriations of one hundred and two thousand from unappropriated estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal two thousand and seventeen to stabilization fund, in order to make final appropriations prior to the setting of fiscal two thousand and seventeen tax rate. This action, in combination with other budget actions adopted or recommended for adoption, would leave city with almost three point two million in tax levy capacity allowed under Proposition Two and One Half to remain unappropriated.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, in addition to his request dated November eighth for the appropriation of one hundred and two thousand to the stabilization fund. He recommends that the city council authorize the further additional appropriation of six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from unappropriated estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal two thousand and seventeen to stabilization fund, in order to more fully appropriate the annual allowable two point five percent growth in the tax levy for this fiscal year as permitted under Proposition Two and One Half. This action will still leave more than two point five million under the levy limit and appropriated.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Building Department requesting an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars for rehabilitation of the elevator at City Hall.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Director of Planning and Economic Development submitting the proposed HDIP Tax Increment Exemption Agreement for the market rate housing development proposed for forty-seven Pleasant Street. The local exemption is one of two incentives for the development of market rate housing in gateway cities. The second incentive is state tax credits awarded by DHCD.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, recommending the city council authorize the approach, approval of the proposed housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement for forty-seven Pleasant Street between the city and forty-seven Pleasant Street Realty Trust. This proposed agreement is recommended by the city Director of Planning and Economic Development, Rob May, but enabled the development of twenty-four market rate residential units. The exemption proposed is for thirty percent of the first five years, twenty-five percent for the next two, and twenty percent for the final year in property taxes applied to the increment above face value.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Fire Department requesting the reestablishment of revolving account for reimbursement overtime. This overtime is reimbursed by the Department of Fire Services, which generates a check that goes directly to the general fund. The estimated total reimbursable overtime as a given fiscal year would be seventy thousand dollars, and a revolving account funded at that level should be sufficient.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Director of Planning and Economic Development submitting the proposed HDIP Tax Increment Exemption Agreement for the market rate housing development proposed for ninety-three Center Street. The local exemption is one of two incentives for the development of market rate housing in gateway cities. The second incentive is state tax credit awarded by DHCD.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, recommending the city council authorize the approval of the prop, proposed housing development incentive program tax increment exception agreement for ninety-three Center Street.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file. Counselor Morningham.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take numbers fifty-five through sixty-seven collectively.
Mr. President, on that motion, Agenda Items fifty-five through fifty-eight, nine-six-seven Montello Street, what came out of the public safety meeting is we had respectfully requested an opinion from the fire department chief and/or the building commissioner to make sure that there was adequate parking at nine sixty-seven Montello Street. So I'd ask that we not take fifty, what did my colleague say, fifty-five through what?
Sixty-seven.
I'd ask that we take fifty-five through fifty-eight, which is relative to that real property.
Fifty-five through fifty-eight, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to take items fifty-five through fifty-eight collectively. All those in favor? All those opposed? So, so moved. Mr. Clerk, please read fifty-five through fifty-eight.
Okay. Petition Solid Auto Care Corp. for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at nine sixty-seven Montello Street, Unit A-B, Brockton. Bernard Joseph J.M.B. Auto Repair and Frameworks for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at nine sixty-seven Montello Street, Unit C and D, Brockton. Petition of Ronald Homer, DBA Bernado and Ron Auto Repair for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at nine sixty-seven Montello Street, Unit E. Petition of DBA Roland Automotive for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at nine sixty-seven Montello Street, Unit F, Brockton, and City Clerk's Office, June sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Hearing assigned for September twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, at eight P.M. In council, September twenty-sixth. Counselor Farwell, motion to refer to public safety, properly seconded. The motion carried by a hand vote, recommendation is favorable with stipulations.
Counselor Sullivan.
President, I just spoke to Attorney Gildea, our Legislative Council, and he confirmed that for those Agenda Items fifty-five through fifty-eight, at the request of the public safety, we have not received that letter yet from the city fire chief and/or the building commissioner, so I'm going to make a motion to postpone this to the next full city council meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to postpone items fifty-five through fifty-eight to the next city council meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? These are postponed. Counselor Morningham.
So we can take, make a motion to take number fifty-nine through sixty-seven collectively.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to take items fifty-nine through sixty-seven collectively.
As Chair of the Public Safety, I just want to make my colleagues that don't sit on the committee aware that the committee members, five of us, had asked each and every petitioner that came before us to submit, even if it was just a handwritten parking plan relative to their property question where they were seeking a licensing. Attorney Gildea has confirmed that some have submitted, some haven't, so I don't think it would be in best interest of this body to take it collectively.
Counselor, you want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I will throw out the motion.
In that case, we never voted on this, we don't need to. Item number fifty-nine.
Second.
Okay, the petition of A.J. Auto Repair Di, and Diagnostic for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at nine fifty-five Montello Street, Unit One, Brockton, and City Clerk's Office, June sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Hearing assigned for September twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, at eight P.M. And city council, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Counselor Farwell, motion to refer to public safety, properly seconded. Motion carried by a hand vote, November second. Recommendation is favorable with stipulations.
Question is on granting as stipulated. All those in favor? All those opposed? Number fifty-nine is granted. Number sixty.
Unique Collision for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at one eighty-nine Clinton Street, Brockton, City Clerk's Office, August second, two thousand and sixteen. Hearing assigned September twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, at eight P.M. And council, September twenty-sixth. Counsel Stedenski, motion to postpone hearing until next city council meeting, properly seconded. Motion carried by a hand vote. Excuse me, recommended to public safety. Recommendation is favorable with stipulations.
Question is on granting as stipulated. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted.
Unique collision for motor vehicle repair body license located 189 Clinton Street, Brockton. And clerk's office, August 2, 2016. Hearing assigned for September 26, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. In council, September 26. Council Stedensky motion to postpone hearing until next council meeting. Motion was properly seconded and carried. And October 11, refer to public safety. Recommendation for public safety is favorable with stipulations. However, we have an additional note that the fire department has objections. Right now, it does not conform to the proper equipment pending installation of the proper equipment to allow for painting, priming, and bonding. In the approval of the equipment installation, the fire department then would have no objections.
Question is on granting as stipulated. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is granted as stipulated with the fire department's objections.
Pyris Brothers Auto Repair Inc. for motor vehicle repair mechanical license located at 50 Meadowbrook Road, Unit 2 Brockton. Clerk's office, June 21, 2016. Hearing assigned for September 26, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. In council, September 26. Councilor Foulle motion to refer to public safety. Properly seconded by a hand vote. In public safety, November 2. The recommendation is favorable with stipulations.
Councilor Sullivan.
Mr. President, I was just made aware by Legislative Council that Agenda Item 62 has not submitted the required parking plan that came out of Public Safety Committee. As such, I'm going to make a motion to postpone to the next full city council.
Motion made and seconded to postpone item 62. All those in favor? All those opposed? Item 62 is postponed till the next city council meeting.
Petition George A. U. DBA Abington Gas and Auto Sales Inc. for motor vehicle repair mechanical license located at 1100 North Montello Street, Brockton. And clerk's office, July 12, 2016. Hearing assigned for October 11, 2016, 8:00 p.m. In council, October 11. Refer to public safety. Recommendation for public safety is favorable with stipulations.
Question is on granting the license as stipulated. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted.
Petition of Quicker Clean Auto Care for Motor Vehicle Mechanical Repair License located at 287 Montello Street, Unit 2 Brockton. And clerk's office, September 1, 2016. Hearing assigned for October 11, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. In council, October 11, 2016. Refer to the committee on public safety. The recommendation of that committee is favorable with stipulations.
Questions on granting as stipulated. All those in favor? All those opposed? The license is granted.
Petition of border for garage license located at 50 Meadowbrook Road, Unit 3 Brockton. And clerk's office, September 13, 2016. Hearing assigned for October 11, 2016, 8:00 p.m. In council, October 11, 2016. Refer the committee on public safety. That recommendation is favorable with stipulations.
Questions on granting as stipulated. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Item 66.
Classic Auto Repair for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at 50 Meadowbrook Road, Unit 3 Brockton. And clerk's office, June 8, 2016. Hearing assigned for October 11, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. In council chambers. In council, October 11, 2016. Refer the committee on public safety. That report is favorable with stipulation.
Councilor Sullivan.
President, again, 66 Agenda Item has not submitted the required parking plan. I'm going to make a motion to postpone next full city council.
Motion made and seconded to postpone to the next council meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? Postponed.
Petition of A. and Friend Inc. for motor vehicle repair body license located at 640 to 644 Belmont Street. And clerk's office, September 1, 2016. Hearing assigned for October 11, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. In council, October 11. Refer to public safety. Fire department has objections. Currently, there is no proper equipment to allow for painting, priming, and bonding. The fire department would have no objections once the equipment is installed and properly inspected.
Questions on granting as stipulated. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted.
We have the renewal petition of GameStop number 2225-715 Crescent Street for a license for secondhand articles. In council, May 23, 2016. Ready to refer the committee on licenses. That report is favorable.
Questions on granting the license. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted.
We have GameStop number 682-200-Westgate Drive, Brockton, for secondhand articles license. In council, May 23, 2016. Ready to refer the committee on public safety. That report is favorable.
Questions on granting the license. Councilor Sullivan.
I'm sorry. Are we on 69 or 70, Mr. President?
We're on 69.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions on granting the license. All those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Number 70.
Petition of Rome Jewelers for a renewal of their license. Set 12/16, postponed to the next public safety committee. 11/216. And public safety recommended unfavorably based on failure of applicant to appear before the council.
Councilor Sullivan.
Mr. President, and members of the council that are not serving on the public safety subcommittee, I'm going to make a motion as Chair to send this back to the public safety. We're going to give a professional courtesy to a business that's been in the city for over 100 years. But please keep in mind, there's been three public safety meetings, two in the summer and one just two weeks ago, where Rome Jewelers have not appeared. I think we should give them one more bite of the apple. I know the city clerk will be sending it directly to Rome's up on Belmont Street, and that's performing my motion. Send it back to public safety.
Motion made and seconded to send this back to public safety. All those in favor? All those opposed? To the public safety committee. Thank you.
Petition of Sierra Insurance Agency, 84 West Elm Street, for assigned permit, which is an awning. In council, August 22, 2016. The recommendation for public safety is favorable.
Questions on granting. All those in favor? All those opposed? The awning approval is granted.
Audit acceptance and expenditures of a grant in the amount of $40,500 from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection Recycling Dividend and Small Scale Initiative Grant to the City of Brockton Public Works Refuge Division Recycling Dividend and Small Scale Initiative Grant Fund. In council, October 24, 2016. Ready to refer the committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Overguard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Iainiri.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedensky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
Acceptance of the expenditures of a grant in the amount of $88,500 for the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, Mass Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, Phase III Program to the City of Brockton Department of Public Works Mass Electric Vehicle Incentive Phase III Program Grant Fund. In council, October 24, 2016. Refer the committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Overguard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Iainiri.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedensky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
I'll invite Mr. George Duranty, the Transformer Development Initiative Fellow from Mass Development, to discuss the first six months of his accomplishments in a three-year project. In council, October 24, 2016. Refer the committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption of the resolve. All those in favor? All those opposed? The resolve is adopted.
Resolved that the Director of Brockton Council and Agent Member Richard Bach be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss the possible expansion of the council on aging facilities. In council, October 24, 2016. Refer the committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption of the resolve. All those in favor? All those opposed? The resolve is adopted.
Resolved that the mayor, his designee, the police chief, the fire chief are their designees. The chairman of the license commission are his designee. The executive director of the Board of Health and the superintendent of buildings be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss ongoing code enforcement activities, available staffing, as well as specific objections... objectives for the next fiscal year. In council, May 23, 2016. Refer the committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption of the resolve. All those in favor? All those opposed? The resolve is adopted.
An audit is amended in Chapter 19, Section 19-1, composition of the Brockton Police Department Superior Officers with respect to 19-1C, sergeants from 20 sergeant to 24 sergeants.
Refer to ordinance.
An audit is amending Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances, Section 11-211, is hereby amended by adding the following subsection. Section D, there shall be one license issued for each 2,000 population as recorded in the most recent federal census at the time of the application for a license. No additional licenses shall be issued until the number of existing licenses correspond to this provision.
Refer to ordinance.
That the sum... Audit that the sum of $2 million is appropriated to pay cost of inspecting and rehabilitating seven miles of the parallel 24-inch transmission maze from Silver Lake Water Treatment Plant to the Browns Crossing Pump Stations, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow set amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44 and/or Chapter 29C of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city. Therefore, that such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the city unless the treasurer with the approval of the mayor determines that they should be issued is limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29C. That the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount for the Mass Clean Water Trust, the trust established pursuant to Chapter 29C, and in connection therewith to enter into a finance agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or the financing thereof. And that the mayor is authorized to enter into project regularity agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. Further audit, any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order unless, shall any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes. May be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Refer to finance.
Mr. President.
Councilor Farwell.
On this particular agenda item, I'd like to ask that the city council's representative to the Water Commission be invited to appear and provide some information. Apparently, this issue has been debated somewhat extensively in the Water Commission, and I think the rest of the council members would benefit from hearing from our representative.
I'll make sure they're on the invite list.
Unappropriation of $25,000 from unappropriate estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal 2017 to law department ordinary maintenance services.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of $350,000 from unappropriate estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal 2017 to police personal services of overtime.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of $367,000 from unappropriate estimate receipts, the general fund for fiscal 2017, to non-net school spending.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of $50,000 from unappropriated estimate receipts, fiscal 2017, of the general fund to assesses department ordinary maintenance services.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of $20,000 from unappropriated estimate receipts, the general fund 2017, to finance department personal services other than overtime.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of a grant award in the amount of $7,781.52 for the Mass Department of Public Health, Region 5 Mass Association of Health Boards Grant to the City of Brockton Board of Health Mass Association of Health Boards Grant Fund.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of $102,000 from the unappropriate estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal 2017 to stabilization fund.
Refer to finance.
An appropriation of $50,000 from unappropriate estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal 2017 to public property capital elevator repair. These funds will be used in order to provide funding in addition to the $115,000 appropriated in fiscal 2017 budget, as this added funding is necessary to perform the project as estimated.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of $73,037.87 from unappropriate estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal 2017 to fiscal 2016 court judgments, $62,904.30. Roof repair fund, $4309,632.46. Fiscal 2015 9/11 grant fund, $3306,381.43. Fiscal 2013 9/11 grant fund, $3278,619.68. In order to eliminate various funds or appropriation deficits.
Refer to finance.
An appropriation of $635,000 from unappropriate estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal 2017 to the stabilization fund.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of $70,000 from unappropriate estimate receipts of the general fund for fiscal 2017 to fire department personal services overtime, in order to provide added funding for overtime such as hazardous material, team response, and training, 911 emergency dispatch training, and training for the Plymouth County Tactical Response Team.
Refer to finance.
Resolved that the city council authorizes the approval of proposed housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement for 93 Center Street between the city and Yuma Realty Trust.
Refer to finance.
Resolved that the city council, City of Brockton, respectfully requests the honorable members of the city's legislative delegation to file and support legislation which would allow communities with an enrollment of 10,000 students or more as reported in the prior calendar year to be allowed to file a preliminary enrollment report on October 1 of each calendar year, and then final enrollment data on March 1 of the following year, so as to assure the proper level of state aid for the support of the school district.
Refer to finance.
Resolved that the city council authorizes the approval of the proposed housing development incentive program tax increment exemption between TIE for 47 Pleasant Street between the city and 47 Pleasant Street Realty Trust.
Refer to finance.
Resolved to invite Sergeant Brenda Perez and a recently hired crime analyst to present their findings and progress on a study that began of April 2016 for the city of Brockton. This presentation should include locations of high crime rates, communication with other law enforcement agencies, other programs that have come to fruition based on these findings, and cooperations of future plans with the use of this data. The hope of this presentation is to provide the city council and the public with a better understanding of the process of preventing and lowering crime throughout the city and making a safer community for residents and business alike.
Refer to finance.
Resolved to invite the fire chief to appear before a committee of this council to review the expenditures from the fire department budget, and to bring with him any and all documents related to such expenditures, including any supporting contract.
Refer to finance.
Resolved that the city auditor appear before a committee of this council to review required auditing procedures, and that the city auditors authorize and direct it to implement policies and procedures to account for proper recording of data, processing of payments and expenditures of funds. Further, that all department boards and commissioners ought to adhere to the policies and procedure.
Refer to finance.
Resolved that the mayor be invited to appear before a committee of this council to review the expenditures for payment tuition and other fees for the mayor at Mass Square Community College from the city budget, and to bring with him any and all documents related to such expenditures, including any supporting authorization for such expenditure.
Refer to finance. Go back to item number five.
Petition of Gary Thompson, DBA ETA Automotive Repairs for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License located at 287 North Montello Street, Unit 3 Brockton.
Time having arrived, does it clear the hearing open? Is there anyone here in favor? Mr. Thomas, have you made it in? Seeing that Mr. Thomas isn't here, I entertain a motion to postpone to the next...
President, I'll make a motion to postpone next full city council meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to postpone item number five to the next full council meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? That will be postponed till the next city council meeting. Counselors, I did mean to mention, Councilor Barnes had reached out to me. She is in Washington, DC, and they're working in her role as coroner's and lynch's aide, and she was not going to make it back in time for the meeting tonight. We have a late file in the hands of the clerk. Who's filing the late file?
Councilor Foulle. Mr. President, I would like to offer a late file, ask the indulgence of my colleagues. I'll hand it back to the clerk for reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a late file. All those in favor? All those opposed? We will take the late file. Mr. Clerk, please read the order.
The appointment of Jamelle Johnson as special police officer of the city of Brockton for a one-year term ending November 2017.
Refer to finance. Councilor Azak.
Mr. President, moment of personal privilege.
You may.
I'd like to inform residents that the Brockton Police is offering a four-week free self-defense and safety class.